And it affects multiple land owners and so in order to move or resize a drain or put a new culvert in a drain there has to be typically has to be some sort of hydraulic analysis and things along that nature if it's a if it's a ditch that carries water from a couple landowners that is not regulated by the county it becomes an easier thing to design and and kind of get through the process of.
Can I briefly share this scenario and the county on this issue?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
I met with Wayne County because of this problem coming up with other projects in the past and I had heard so we met with Ali there and I said this is what we want to do and he was very helpful he said that he's the one that recommended the bio swale and so we did the bio swale calculations and I also mentioned we've got this and it's it's a ditch very shallow that runs across our property now no it's not you've got she's got a river on hers but what goes across our property is pretty shallow our intent is not to change where it comes in and leaves our property. Well, the drawings are just a cartoon that hasn't been engineered yet.
Let's let's.
We're not that's what I'm trying to say we're not moving it.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay but anyways.
Let's have.
Property it arcs north and it goes right where my bio swell needs to be and so when I took that back to the county I said how difficult would it be because it's a D E Q the paperwork is what's the problem and the county says well we see your situation we'll work with you to get that permitted to done but it's we just wanted to arc south instead of arc north and that just gives us more room for the bio swell so but that's that's what I meant with the county they're the ones that first told me you don't move ditches it just doesn't happen but then they says that we'll work with you and we'll get it done so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay getting back let me borrow this.
Oh absolutely.
My tablet keeps blinking out on me as I was saying or where we were at before we covered the question by Commissioner Atchison do we have any other questions from the board or comments okay hearing none then I will entertain that motion to so we can move forward with the special land use request if you would be so kind.
Absolutely I would like to move that case nineteen zero thirteen River of Life Assembly of God addition special use land request the applicant River of Life Assembly of God is requesting a special use permit to construct a sanctuary addition the proposed sanctuary addition is eighty one hundred sixty three square feet of space and will be in addition to the existing church the location is commonly known as eight seventy Savage Road given the information called out in our letter from staff of June the I'm sorry fourth June fourth from McKenna finding that the religious institution meets the criteria for special land use approval I move that we grant the special use permit subject to the conditions spelled out in the letter from June fourth McKenna.
And the engineering letter from.
Has has the engineering letter been read into the record or is that in the preliminary site plan approval?
I think that's under preliminary.
So my motion is only for the site plan approval with the conditions spelled out in the letter.
And is there one from the fire marshal?
I believe that's also part of the preliminary site plan approval is that correct?
Okay.
My motion stands sir.
Okay.
Yes.
The recommendation to the board.
That'd be a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Franzoi and I do believe that a recommendation to the board is a roll call vote.
It is.
Okay.
Brian Kelly.
Yes.
Medina Atchison.
Yes.
Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Joan Franzoi.
Yes.
Don Pointon.
Yes.
Okay that portion of special land use will now be moved on to the township board next on the agenda is the preliminary site plan approval request for the same applicant all the particulars we already know and have heard and we will move straight to well another presentation if need be by the applicant all done okay then we'll.
And it affects multiple land owners. And so in order to move or resize a drain or put a new culvert in a drain, there has to be typically has to be some sort of hydraulic analysis and things along that nature. If it's a ditch that carries water from a couple landowners that is not regulated by the county, it becomes an easier thing to design and kind of get through the process of.
Sure.
Sure. I met with Wayne County because of this problem coming up with other projects in the past and I had heard. So we met with Ali there and I said, this is what we want to do. And he was very helpful. He said that he's the one that recommended the bio swale. And so we did the bio swale calculations. And I also mentioned, we've got this, and it's a ditch very shallow that runs across our property. Now, no, it's not. You've got, she's got a river on hers, but what goes across our property is pretty shallow. Our intent is not to change where it comes in and leaves our property. Well, the drawings are just a cartoon. That hasn't been engineered yet. We're not, that's what I'm trying to say. We're not moving it.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, but anyways.
Let's have.
Property, it arcs north and it goes right where my bio swale needs to be. And so when I took that back to the county, I said, how difficult would it be? Because it's a DEQ, the paperwork is what's the problem. And the county says, well, we see your situation. We'll work with you to get that permitted to done. But it's, we just want it to arc south instead of arc north. And that just gives us more room for the bio swale. So, but that's, that's what I, I met with the county. They're the ones that first told me, you don't move ditches. It just doesn't happen. But then they says, we'll work with you and we'll get it done. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, getting back, let me borrow this.
Oh, absolutely.
Because my tablet keeps blinking out on me. As I was saying, where we were at before, we covered the question by Commissioner Atchison. Do we have any other questions from the board or comments? Okay, hearing none, then I will entertain that motion to, so we can move forward with the special land use request. If you would be so kind.
Absolutely. I would like to move that case nineteen zero thirteen River of Life Assembly of God addition special use land request. The applicant River of Life Assembly of God is requesting a special use permit to construct a sanctuary addition. The proposed sanctuary addition is eighty-one hundred sixty-three square feet of space and will be in addition to the existing church. The location is commonly known as eight seventy Savage Road. Given the information called out in our letter from staff of June the, I'm sorry, fourth, June fourth from McKenna, finding that the religious institution meets the criteria for special land use approval, I move that we grant the special use permit subject to the conditions spelled out in the letter from June fourth McKenna.
And the engineering letter from.
Has, has the engineering letter been read into the record? Or is that in the preliminary site plan approval?
I think that's under preliminary.
So my motion is only for the site plan approval with the conditions spelled out in the letter.
Is there one from the fire marshal?
I believe that's also part of the preliminary site plan approval. Is that correct?
Okay. Okay.
My motion stands, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Recommendation to the board.
That'd be a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Franzoi. And I do believe that a recommendation to the board is a roll call vote?
It is.
Okay.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Atchison? Sherry Budd? Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Franzoi?
Yes.
Don Pointon?
Yes.
Okay, that portion of special land use will now be moved on to the township board. Next on the agenda is the preliminary site plan approval request for the same applicant. All the particulars we already know and have heard. And we will move straight to, well, another presentation if need be by the applicant. All done? Okay, then we'll, we'll move on to, we have a rendering, okay. And we, okay.
We were not anticipating this to be on this topic tonight, but we appreciate it.
The comments or, we'll start with staff and then head to the consultants. Anything from staff? I'm just doing you guys first and then, or do you want to go last?
It's not a problem. I can read the fire marshal's review letter if you'd like. So our fire marshal, David McAnally, provided a review letter dated May twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, where they had reviewed the proposed set of plans. So they had indicated the site plans are for in addition to the existing building. They've reviewed the adopted fire code of Amburran Township and have offered a couple different comments. One of those comments was with regards to the emergency radio coverage system. This is something that we discuss every time is that we have to make sure that our firefighters and emergency responders can essentially have radio communication within the building. They are going to perform a signal strength test if the building is put up at that time before the final certificate of occupancy is granted. They'd indicated the system is not put in place for the building. A test will be required for each lease suite, if there are any, within the building and that the tenant has occupied the space in prior to final CVO. And they have also provided information to the applicant regarding that CVO, regarding that specification of the code. They had made some additional comments from a door leading from an existing sanctuary swings in the wrong direction. That's on the floor plan. They'd indicated that additional doors needed for existing sanctuary or occupancy element placed on the room and that the doors in the lobby leading to the portico will need to swing in direction of egress. So all their comments are based on the floor plan that have been provided and those will be handled when the building plans are, if the project moves forward, when the building plans are designed and when the project's built. So based on that, the plan, the recommendation of approval has been granted by the fire marshal with those above mentioned exceptions, so long as they're addressed. With that, that's all I have on the fire report.
Thank you. McKenna, you're up next.
Chairman, we've reviewed the site plan in detail and we do have a lot of comments. Once again, I want to clarify, this is a preliminary review. Several times after preliminary review, the plan will go through multiple tweaks before it gets to the point where we are actually ready to recommend final approval on it. There are some basic site plan review requirements, just details of permits that need to be there on the plan that the applicant needs to add. The proposed addition to the building is in compliance with all of the setback requirements for the district. The maximum permitted building height is two stories or thirty feet and the elevations show that it is twenty-one point two-five feet to the midpoint of the gable and twenty-eight feet to the peak of the roof. So the maximum height of the building is also within what is permitted for the ag or the residential district areas. With regard to access, the site has two access drives of Savage Road. Both are to be retained. Now, the access, east access drive will be made twenty-four feet wide as required by the fire department in order to provide for required two-way movement of vehicles. Now, the west access drive is only eleven point five feet wide and it is an existing non-conformity. It cannot be widened, so it shall remain as it is at that width, but it will be limited for emergency access only. And signage will be added that in the event there is an emergency, you need a secondary means of entering the site. It will be used by the fire department or the other emergency services. It will not be used by the people who visit the church. With regard to sidewalks, there is a new five-foot wide concrete sidewalk proposed along the side Savage Road frontage. There are also sidewalks around the building's perimeter allowing for entrance into the sanctuary area. There is some design discrepancy in how the building actually is going to be entered from where the handicap accessible spaces are shown. The applicant had previously proposed a design. We had suggested a correction. The correction that they made was not what was suggested. So we will be going back to the drawing board to correct it so that people who are in wheelchairs or from handicap accessible spaces do not have to drive into the main driveway to get into the sanctuary. That area design must be altered. With regard to parking, based upon the seating capacity of the main assembly, the total number of required spaces for the church is one hundred and twenty-two spaces. The site plan notes a total of one hundred and twenty-four, including five handicap accessible spaces. Landscaping, the ordinance has specific requirements for landscaping, although these are not applicable to residential uses in the ag district. Since this is a religious institution, it does have specific standards. There is a requirement for landscaping along the right-of-way on Savage Road and the applicant will be adding some deciduous trees, an ornamental tree and twenty-four shrubs along Savage Road frontage. The parking lot is required to be screened from abutting properties. Now, the parking lot is setback over three hundred and sixty feet. There is a bunch of pine trees over there, but there are some gaps in those pine trees. So the applicant is going to be installing more pine trees to fill in all the gaps in the trees. And one of the concerns expressed was the fact that the base of the trees might be trimmed to create an open area. That is something we will add as a condition. The intent of the evergreen trees is to create an opaque screen or a hedge. So trimming of the base of the trees would not be allowed to clean it. It will create an opaque screen. With regard to green belt buffering, as I mentioned, the site plan will be altered to provide the required ten-foot setback for the side areas. The site plan does, the landscape plan does propose arborvitae and junipers, neither of which are considered trees. We are still working with the applicant on that and those will have to be substituted for evergreen trees placed with a spacing as recommended by the ordinance. And the ordinance clearly states that these trees that are planted for screening must be planted in such a manner that over a specified time period, it grows into an impenetrable hedge, which provides a screening for the property. With regard to the detention pond landscaping, this is a bio swale and Wayne County regulates all of its ponds and swales. So any plantings that are done under the bio swale area will be reviewed by the county. And once it is approved by the county, we would ask the applicant to provide us with a copy of the landscaping for that area. There are some discrepancies in the site plan and landscape plan with regard to the dumpster area. In some areas it's shown as a green space and some it's shown as a paved area. So any discrepancies between the landscape plan and the site plan must be resolved. Irrigation is required for plantings. It's not recommended that the irrigation be on all the time. We have an unusually rainy season, but if we have a dry season, we do not want the plants in these green belt and screen, landscape screens to actually die out. So the irrigation is helpful at such times when we do not have the abundance of rain that we have had to ensure that the landscaping is viable on the site. As to tree removal permit, as I previously mentioned, we did get a tree survey with a list of twenty-nine trees. I'm not sure where these trees are or are they being removed or where they just tagged. So if any regulated tree is being removed, it must have a replacement and those calculations will be required to be provided. As to lighting, the parking lot does include twenty-foot high light poles shown. There is a photometric light plan. I had made a comment that the lighting illumination intensity is shown only up to the property lines. I would recommend the applicant to expand beyond the property lines and show us that the illumination intensity falls to zero by the time it hits the property lines. We can also revisit the location of the light poles and maybe having them on a timer so that the light pollution that might be generated from the site when it's not in use is minimized to the extent feasible. As to architecture and building details, the applicant has submitted elevations. The addition is designed with a forty-two inch masonry base and cemented both siding and provided with an asphalt shingled roof. We wanted clarification if the masonry proposed is actually brick or is it block. The east elevation is to be provided with a row of windows, while the south, the main entrance, will be provided by a covered portico where people can be dropped off to the church. The building colors must be noted. I'm assuming the rendering is intended to show what the colors will be, but they must be labeled on the final plan also. There is a new ten-by-ten dumpster enclosure shown on the southeast corner of the parking lot. The structure is to be constructed a split-faced block and provided with cedar gates and reinforced steel and will have bollards as required by the ordinance. Some concern was expressed about its location, so I will discuss it with the applicant and make sure that that is the optimal location for the dumpster that works not only for access to the dumpster, but is also as far away from any residential use as possible. The site has an existing non-conforming sign along its Savage Road frontage that is located within twenty-five feet of the property line. The minimum required setback is thirty feet, so the applicant is going to remove the sign and replace it with a new six-foot tall, twenty-four square foot sign at the thirty-foot setback line as permitted. Now, the ordinance does allow for a single monument sign with a maximum height of six feet and forty square feet placed at the setback of thirty feet. So the sign that they're proposing is within the ordinance limits. As I mentioned, this is a preliminary review. Lot of details have been provided, but the plan still needs many items of required information, lot of correction and tweaks. Based upon our review at this time, it would be our recommendation that you approve a preliminary site plan subject to the fourteen conditions that are listed in our review letter dated June fourth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board? FTCH?
Sure, thank you. We've already gone over quite a bit of, a lot of these, these comments. So I'm just going to highlight, I've got about ten things on here just to kind of reiterate that we are aware of the issues and things that are in the letter that will be required moving forward. So based on our letter written June seventh, twenty nineteen, the first general comment that we have is that plans must indicate relocating and/or addressing the overhead utilities that run through the proposed building footprint. The applicant must supply any and all easement information to Van Buren Township for review. Plans must show the location of any proposed relocated overhead utility poles. Comment two, the applicant must or should be aware that more detailed plans will be required when submitting engineering plans for approval. These details include, but are not limited to, quantity lists, pavement grades, elevations, dimensions, driveway radii, invert elevations, slope of proposed pipes, trench drains, culverts, finish grades for all fire hydrants, valve wells, storm drainage area maps, bio swale grades, elevations, inlet and outlet details, proposed elevations of all pavement, sidewalks, curbs, parking islands, typical sidewalk details, amongst other things. Talking about water main service, which we haven't really touched on. Currently, there's a sixteen-inch water main that runs down Savage Road that is currently tapped with a one-inch service line that feeds the existing building. From our discussions, there's no fire suppression in the building. So in preliminary discussions we had with the applicants, they are adding fire suppression to the building. So a four-inch, a new four-inch line, fire service line will be tapped in, tapped off of the sixteen-inch line as well as an eight-inch water main that is going to service a hydrant near the parking lot as separate feeds. The two cannot run off the same feed because if your building is on fire and the sprinklers are on, you don't have enough pressure to run the fire hydrant. So they come off of two separate lines. And they have updated, and their updated plans had, made these improvements to their plans and they look good on that front. One, one comment we have is that they must, the applicant must verify demand pressure requirements for the building service and flow once they get to final design of that service and sprinkler system. There is no proposed sanitary service connection in addition to the existing sanitary service connection that they are, they currently have. We just will require them to, to supply or submit basis of design flows just to make sure that their current service meets the demands of what the new building will. And now onto the storm sewer. So I have three or four comments that I think address everything that has been discussed today. So just, you know, everyone should be aware that we did notice these things as well. So comment one, applicant must verify the regulating authority for the drainage ditch on the property. Preliminary investigations earlier when this letter was written by FTCH did not indicate the ditch was a county drain. Based on a phone conversation with the project engineer, on June sixth, the developer has consulted with Wayne County regarding the project and they do not recognize the ditch as a county drain either. The drainage ditch does appear to be an established waterway and would fall under jurisdiction of Michigan, the Michigan Department of Great Lakes and Energy. And the applicant is advised to discuss with Eagle, which is the new MDEQ, for assistance in applying with a joint permit application. Discussions with the regulating authorities should begin now as to not delay the approval process. Comment two, the plans show the proposed drainage ditch being constructed east and west across the property, whereas the existing drainage ditch is shown as an angle according to the submitted topographic survey dated November fifteenth. The applicant must include ditch grades and tie-in details to the adjacent property ditches to account for the shift in the drainage ditch alignment. At no time may the proposed development and grading prohibit upstream flow from continuing through the property. In addition to that, the plans indicate a thirty, thirty-foot eighteen-inch reinforced concrete culvert on the east and west sides, which will just need to be designed as well with that ditch shift and hitting the adjacent property ditch grades. Comment four, an underground or sheet flow drainage system will be required. The proposed trench drain system that they show in the parking lot has potential for many issues with maintenance, freeze thaw, drainage issues, ADA compliance issues and the like. Trench drains typically aren't used in this capacity. They're usually used for loading docks in smaller areas where you don't have as much traffic. So we're going to work with them to look at different solutions. The applicant must submit and obtain stormwater and right-of-way approval from Wayne County prior to VBT, Van Buren Township granting final site plan approval. It is recommended that the applicant submit early in the process and/or have in-person meeting with Wayne County to avoid resubmittals due to county regulations and changes. One comment that I did have is the permitting office has shifted some of their employees. So Ali, who you previously talked with, is no longer in that position. So it would be good to sit down again because we know that there have been changes or, you know, differing employees on that, on that level. Outside of that, the only other issue that we talked about was soil erosion and sedimentation control, which will also require a Wayne County approval. And that should be submitted per the requirements on this letter. So at this time, we are recommending the planning commission grant a River of Life Sanctuary Addition Project preliminary site plan approval. Further research and coordination with governing authorities must be conducted regarding the onsite drainage ditch and overall onsite stormwater management prior to submitting any further engineering plans. That's all that I have.
Thank you very much for that. Any comments or questions from the board? Comments or questions from the applicant or anything to clarify? Any comments or questions from the audience?
I have Wayne County map that they did in two thousand twelve. It shows that is the Henry drain. It is Wayne County's map.
No, 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 no.
Pardon me.
No, I just want you to go up to the mic. I'll, I'll, I'll take this. I don't want you to waste your time. No, 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 no.
The blue is the, is the open drain going right across there.
Okay, the only.
And here's where it makes that little loop-de-loop.
Oh, yeah, that's nice.
And this is where Kelly lives.
Okay.
So if they want to straighten it from there, they're halfway across their property.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
That's what we're all about.
Thank you much. Thank you much. Now, now, now.
Wayne County.
I see that it says Wayne County. Absolutely. Absolutely, it's not your map.
They sent it to me when they did the.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Okay, would anyone else like to take a look?
I can see it from here.
You good?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Sure.
Okay.
Now, are you submitting this to us to hold on to or would you like to take it with you?
Okay.
Let's make sure, let's make sure that we get a copy of it. Staff could make photocopy of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Director, director, director anchors did you have a comment to make, sir?
To ask a question, would it be helpful if I kind of explained how the special land use and preliminary and final site plan process work? Because I just want to make sure we're all clear with where this project actually is and what these approvals mean. I want to make sure the audience understands it.
I think that would be wonderful.
So for site plan approval and for special land use, we do these two-step approval processes. So they call them preliminary and final site plan approval. For a lot of the issues that you're looking at addressing, what preliminary site plan approval does is it looks at the project almost in a conceptual state to see if it's something that, that is feasible for them to do as Mr. Kammer indicated. All of these items, you know, they talked about stormwater management was the big concern. All of these items, if preliminary approval is granted tonight, they still have to go back with an engineer and prove that all these items will not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties. They're still going to have to go through approvals with Wayne County and it's called Eagle now. It used to be the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. Now it's, I don't even know what the acronym stands for. now it's, I don't even know what the acronym stands for, it changes so many times over the past decade, but, but, so, they're still gonna have to prove that they're able to do these things. Our final site plan approval, if, of course, the project goes forward, the final site plan approval will be conducted at another public meeting. And the final site plan approval is granted only if they can actually prove on paper in a factual manner that all of these items will not have adverse impacts. So, they're gonna have to be very close, if not already have approval, from Wayne County and from Eagle, and, you know, some of these outstanding zoning items, like the, the photometric plan and some of the landscaping, are gonna have to be ninety-nine point nine percent completed before they'll even come back to the board for site plan approval. So, so that's why we do it in a two-step phase, the reason, the other reason why is it benefits the applicant, because they get an idea that we're able to, you know, at least conceptually move forward before they spend tens of thousands of dollars on a civil engineer to do all of the documentation necessary to prove that, you know, the, the site is feasible. I mean, realistically, you know, if, if, you know, we look at it conceptually, we give preliminary approval, and then they can't prove that it's gonna work, then, then it won't get approved in the site, you know, the project's scope will have to change in order to find a way where it can work. So, you know, approval's granted tonight, it's not just, you know, okay, we're granting an approval and then the project's approved, it's, there's still a lot of work to do on their end to prove that they can even do this project. But, but this two-step approval allows them to move forward. Now, that's just site plan approval. The special land use, just, you know, looks at the, the use of the property, looks at the church use, and that is a rec, the Planning Commission acts as a recommend, recommending body for that. It still has to go before the Township Board for approval. That approval will go likely sometime in early August is gonna be my guess. I'm not sure what the date of the first Township Board meeting is, but, but that'll likely be the target date that they're looking at. And all of our agendas are on the website, and, and, you know, anybody's able to attend these public meetings and offer, offer your comments, but, that, that's why we kinda do the two-step approval process, and that's where it's at right now, we're at the first step, they still have to demonstrate that they can do this project. So, that's kind of my overview.
Thank you, thank you very much. With that, no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Jeff?
Mr. Kelly?
I've moved to grant the applicant preliminary site plan approval to build an addition at 870 Savage Road, based on the analysis and subject to the conditions detailed in the McKenna letter dated June 4th, 2019, the Fishback letter dated June 7th, 2019, and the Van Buren Fire Department letter dated May 29th, 2019.
Support.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kelly and supported by Commissioner Jar. Are there any questions on the motion? Favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
We have a preliminary site plan approval, and also a whole list of marching orders that have to be met. Very good. Next on the agenda, agenda, item number three, it's a master plan amendment for 41620 Eastern River Drive Future Land Use. The applicant, Scott Jones, requesting an amendment to the Township's future land use map to change the future land use designation from medium density fam, single-family A to, oh, I'm sorry, medium density, single-family to a multiple-family residential to construct detached condominiums on the property. Thank you very much. And at this time, we'll have a presentation by the applicant.
Good evening, board, thanks for your consideration.
Good evening.
Nothing's really changed with the project since my last presentation, we did take the recommendation to go out and start concept and engineering on the project, so, we're in that process moving forward. Our request is to change from R1C, which is the current zoning, to RM, which will allow us to increase the density. Our plan is to build seventy non-attached condos on a thirteen acre parcel located at 41620 Eastern River Drive. That property is owned in a partnership by myself, my brother-in-law, Bill Oger, my sister, Tammy Oger, in a corporation that's called 41620 Eastern River Drive LLC. He's submitted the application to the Township, and our hope is that we can move forward with recommendation to the Township Board. Thank you.
We have any other questions or comments, we will call you back up.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a presentation by staff.
Thank you. The next step in the process of amending the future land use plan is to repair the revision of the future land use plan and move to submit those amendments to the Township Board. The Township Board will then make a decision to approve the distribution of the plan amendment to the adjacent communities and utilities as required under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Included in your packet, McKenna Associates has provided a revised future land use map, which depicts the property at 41620 Eastern River Drive, as RM, multiple-family residential, with a note that states land uses should be limited for parcel, that's the parcel ID for 41620 Eastern River Drive, to single-family detached dwellings at a maximum density of six to seven single-family dwelling units per acre. Due to the adjacent land uses, multiple-family housing is not suitable for this area, so, and then, the decision, and, and so that's the note that's on the master plan for future land use map. The decision for the Planning Commission is whether or not to recommend to the Township Board the distribution of the plan to utilities adjacent communities for their forty-two day comment and review period, and based on prior discussion, staff is recommending approval of the request. I did wanna highlight that at the, a prior meeting, staff was directed to send out our notice of intent to plan, which is the initial step in the master plan amendment process, and this was sent out on June 21st, 2019, again, in accordance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. So, I mean, just to kind of give an overview, you know, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act has a very long, somewhat arduous process to be able to, excuse me, to be able to amend a, a master plan, there's a lot of notifications, a lot of different items that need to be addressed and, and taken care of in order to move forward on it. With this project, we had talked at the last meeting of a couple different options for how we were gonna do this. Reviewing our master plan, you know, utilizing a different future land use category and having a note which further restricts it, is actually something that we've used in other areas in the Township, the, is incorporated in the south side master plan. So, it's a common, it's a practice that we've used in the past, it's something uncommon, the note, we believe, does limit the, that site to single-family detached condominiums, so if somebody were gonna try to come in and rezonate RM, you know, straight just to put in apartment homes, we think that would give the Planning Commission enough teeth to be able to say no and restrict it, to make sure that what goes in there is consistent with some of the other single-family residential homes in the area. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the Planning Commission may have.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry, thank you very much, Director Akers. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Chairman.
Commissioner Jar.
I understand that we're doing a future land use update, and this is part of a, what you call a longer process in rezoning. It requires sending out notification to the surrounding municipalities and utilities to get their feedback, it's essentially to soliciting of a feedback. However, I know that part of this project is, from what I've heard of it, having not seen the conceptual drawings yet, you're, you're trying to get it rezoned into RM District. I know that from the previous meeting, one of the points that staff had made was that in order to realize the project as it has been explained to, to the staff, we may need to change the residential, the RM District zoning ordinance to allow this, since the RM District doesn't currently allow single-family detached. You can't build single-family detached in an RM District currently. So, I think that part of what we discussed in the meeting, two meetings ago, was the possibility of looking at maybe a different type of district to support this, since we think it's kind of a new and novel development project that we haven't seen before in the Township. And I, I'm still interested in getting some of staff's feedback on ways that we could facilitate this development. I don't personally think, having read the ordinance, that this is as simple as simply allowing single-family detached in the RM District. We could add that into the, the zoning ordinance, but I think that that may not be as straightforward from an ordinance standpoint as, as it might look on first pass. I'd like some more detail on that. Also, issues along the, which, which lake area district this parcel would end up being in. If you change it to an RM District, that might force the, the Lake District to turn into the BLB District from the BLA, that could have a negative impact on your, your docking plans, for example. That said, I am, I am in support of moving forward with your request to update the future land use map with the, with the, the star, the asterisk stating that the density has to be limited and has to be single-family detached, while we in parallel work on adjusting perhaps the ordinance, and you work on providing us with a, a site plan overview and a better picture of what it is you're trying to accomplish, so that we can do the best job we can to help you develop this property in a way that's good for you and good for the community as a whole. I guess that, that, those are my concerns, I hope I was clear enough, if anyone has any questions, speak up.
Through the chair, you know, one of, one of the, we had a conversation earlier this morning regarding the RM District and regarding some of the other items which may need to be addressed, because, you know, at, at one of the earlier presentations, the applicant did state that the, the, you know, that his intent was to build condo units ten feet apart, and the current setbacks in the RM District require that you have a twenty-foot setback between buildings. However, but, but the setbacks in the RM District are intended for duplexes and triplexes and apartment buildings, which, which, you know, single-family residential even at, even at a higher density, you know, having a, a lower setback may make sense, so, that'll have to be something that, in the future, staff brings forward to make sure, as, as part of that, that zoning ordinance amendment that we had discussed, adding single-family, maybe revisiting some of those setbacks and what we allow, and I would encourage future staff, cause I won't be here, to look at, to make sure that we're working with the applicant to, to address that. I know the other comment that, that was brought up, and, and I know I had spoken with the applicant prior to the meeting, and they had indicated that they're working on it, was, you know, making sure that, that the Planning Commission, before all is finally said and done, at least see some type of conceptual plan, just to see how this project looks, moving forward before you give the final, I guess, green light in order to adopt it. So, with that, you know, the Planning Commission has a couple options, you know, you, you could, if you wanted to do it conditionally, if we wanted to recommend to the Township Board to distribute that, we could recommend it conditionally on, you know, before the applicant comes back for their public hearing, which is their next Planning Commission step, that they have a conceptual plan. I know I, I don't wanna speak for the applicant, but I know we had talked prior to the meeting and that they were working on something, so I'm not sure if that's, I'll go through the chair, but I'm not sure if that's what the Planning Commission wants to do, or if that's okay with the applicant, but, you know, that might be a way to address this concern.
With that, comments from the board?
The Chair, I would just like to know, Commissioner Jar, are you proposing that we retain the current zoning to RM? Because RM would include, correct me, consultants, is that like proposing like apartment-type housing? Because I prefer to have condos on this property versus more apartments.
Yes.
The RM zoning district will allow the applicant to build the clubhouse that, I believe was called out in the plan. A residential district doesn't allow that use. However, the RM District doesn't allow single-family detached condominiums, so we have, we have a disconnect, a conundrum. We'll, we will have to work on the ordinance, the zoning ordinances, by either creating a new district to support this type of development, or adjusting the RM District, which seems like it might be the easiest one to adjust, in order to allow single-family detached residences in the zone. That's my concern, and that is a necessary step of moving forward with what I understand the project to currently be. And I wanna make sure that, that the applicant understands that moving forward with this rezoning, this is something I think that, and staff will correct me if I'm wrong, this is something that we can move forward with, the future land use plan is not the same as the ordinance, this is merely an, an intent that we're thinking that we, we will turn that into an RM zone, correct?
Well, yes, and this was part of, you know, cause we had initially, when we were discussing this project, there, there were several steps which needed to occur, you know, the master plan amendment is, is one component of it, but, there also needs to be a component of it that's a rezoning, cause we need to actually go through the process in the Zoning Enabling Act to formally rezone the property. And the other comment that we had made as, as part of a strategy is that the RM District will need to be amended to allow for single-family detached housing, and then, based on our discussion earlier, the setbacks for those single-family detached housing will need to be looked at, cause they may not be consistent with the setbacks that we allow for, for duplexes. So, so, I mean, there are a series of steps that will need to occur in order for this project to move forward, but, you know, I'm, I'm sure, you know, staff will be on top of it the whole way.
And I believe that, at this time, staff is thinking that a rezoning to RM is probably the likely path that this will take in order to facilitate the development, and given that that's the case, it makes sense to begin the process of updating the future land use map. But I would like it, if we, since, you know, you've made a good suggestion, contingent upon seeing a better site plan layout, I, I would, I would like to see that before we make a recommendation to the, to the trustees, to the Township Board.
I don't, I don't wanna disagree with you, Jeff.
Fair enough.
Mister Commissioner, but I just don't, I don't wanna like hold up the process.
Exactly, exactly, neither do I.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna slow things down. You guys know, in the past meetings, I have spoken about wanting housing for all stages, I want ranch properties, housing, so this fits my desire for our community for that sort of development.
I think it looks good too, we're in agreement. I just wanna make it clear that we do have more work to do, and a rezoning to the RM District, it wouldn't work right now. We do need to update the ordinances in the RM, and, but that does not need to delay this, what we're doing right now. That's the point I was trying to make.
Right. Okay. Any other comments from the board here? Any comments or questions from the applicant?
Yeah, I would just like to add, Scott Jones, Van Buren Township, forgot that the first time, sorry. We, I think you fairly depicted what we're considering, unattached, ten foot in-between, and with a clubhouse and a multi-use facility. We're flexible on what zoning, obviously, we, we wanna try to drive the project forward, so our hope is if we can move in parallel with some of the processes, and we understand the public hearing timeframe might be September 25th, so I'll have preliminary drawings to you much sooner than that, and, and we're excited to share the concept and get feedback and, and try to keep things moving forward, so, thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'd like a clarification, we've gone through quite a bit of back and forth on where we're at, and if Director Akers could clarify our next step for me, I would be happy to make a motion.
Yes, so, the, the next...
I think I know where we're, where we're at, but...
So, the recommended action is for the Planning Commission to recommend to the Township Board to approve the amendment to the future land use map for distribution per the Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
Mister Chairman, I would move as Director Akers has requested. Mr. Chairman, I would support that.
It has been so moved by Commissioner Kelly and supported by Commissioner Jar that we will recommend to the township board to approve the amendment of the future land use map for distribution per the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. Is there any question on a motion, other than what we already had? This is a recommendation, so it will be another roll call.
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. On item number three, we are moving ahead along. Thank you very much for every one of all on this particular item. Next on the agenda, we have item number four, a temporary land use approval. The applicant, 5905 Incorporated, is requesting a temporary land use permit to park cars and trucks. Property is located at 5905 Belleville Road, and is on the east side of Belleville Road, north of Van Born Road. And we will have a presentation by the applicant. How do you do, sir?
My name is Gary Percy. I'm one of the owners of 5905, Inc. Again, we're asking for permission to get a temporary permit for parking new vehicles in transit.
Okay. Thank you much. And are there any?
I'm sorry.
I said, thank you very much for that. If there are any questions or other comments or clarification, we'll call you back up.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we'll have a, you have a presentation by staff, or yes, by staff?
Thank you. The 5905, Inc. is requesting a temporary land use permit for the temporary parking and storage of new cars and trucks at 5905 Belleville Road. Temporary use is proposed to be for one-year timeframe. Per the zoning ordinance, temporary land uses that operate more than seven consecutive days require planning commission approval. The following items are reviewed, or actually, the application was based on the approval standards in 7.120, the township zoning ordinance. And the review is based upon conversations that I've had with the applicant and provided materials, excuse me. One item that I wanted to highlight is why this requires a temporary land use permit, because the applicant is working with an existing lot. It's an existing gravel lot that they have, and why it requires it. So, this lot has been historically used for storage of equipment and tractor-truck trailers. So, they have utilized it for different items. The parking of cars is actually not a use that's listed, because they're in the M2, which is our heavy industrial zoning district. The parking of cars is not listed as a primary principal use in that district. It's listed as a primary principal use in the airport district, so the activity is considered separately. However, based on, you know, the parking of the site and the activities that have gone on there in the past, the site is very suitable for this type of use. I mean, they, you know, having cars come in and out, and the storage of cars, it's an existing lot, there's a lot of things that make sense. So, because of that, and because it's temporary in nature, we are able to consider it under a temporary land use permit. So, we've completed reviews based on the standards and the zoning ordinance. You know, I could, I'll go through them briefly. I'll try not to take up too much time. But regarding adequacy of parking and access, the site is used for trailer and semi-truck trailer and equipment storage and staging. It has access off of Yost Road, which is to the north. There is an existing trucking operation which is on there, so this use is not out of character with the existing uses that are on-site. And the site is designed to be able to maneuver traffic throughout it. It's an existing lot, and the site has adequate stormwater drainage. That's what we discussed with the applicant. When we look at compatibility of surrounding land uses, the property is actually an existing industrial area, and it's surrounded by industrial on all sides, with the exception to the south, where it butts the railroad tracks. So, again, it's very compatible with the surrounding land uses. There are no proposed buildings. The parking of the vehicles are at least 150 feet from Belleville Road, and the applicant actually owns most of these surrounding property as well. So, setbacks are not a concern with this temporary land use. Again, we're not anticipating any impact on utilities or trash disposal and site cleanup as it's part of their existing operation. There weren't any employees proposed on-site, but the truck yard does have adequate sanitary facilities in some of the other buildings on-site. Regarding hours of operation, the applicant did not indicate an hours of operation. However, it's not located adjacent to any residential areas. The site is in a well-established industrial area, and it's surrounded by industrial which have other operations which go about various hours of the day. So, truthfully, no matter what time it operates, I don't think it's going to have a significant impact on anything around it. There's no outdoor lighting and signs, which were initially proposed. If they are, we're recommending that they be reviewed by township staff for compliance with the zoning ordinance. No other licenses and permits required that staff is aware of. We're not anticipating the use to increase noise, odor, dust layer from their use, because the site is used for an existing storage and tractor-trailer facility. The fire marshal has completed a review of the site and has identified no issues. There is a security fence around the site, and I believe the site is patrolled also by a security guard. So, you know, we're not anticipating any security issues. Regarding off-site impacts of traffic volumes, the roads and the immediate vicinity are major township roads. We have Yost and Belleville. And the temporary use, we're not anticipating any impact of lower travel volumes, because it's storing vehicles on the site. We're not anticipating any necessity for performance bonds or other concerns. So, based on, staff is recommending approval of temporary land use based on the following four conditions, is that, one, vehicles parked immediately adjacent to Belleville Road, shall be parked with the front of the vehicle facing away from Belleville Road, adjacent properties in order to avoid headlight glare. Two, the site shall be maintained in a clean manner, and trash will be properly disposed of. Three, any exterior lighting or signs have to be reviewed and approved by the Planning and Economic Development Department for consistency with the zoning ordinance. And four, that the temporary land use permit is valid for a period of one year, ending July 10, 2020. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the applicant? Any comments or questions from the audience? No? I would entertain a motion.
Chair.
I would move to grant the applicant a temporary land use permit to park cars and trucks at the property located at 5905 Belleville Road, subject to the analysis and based on the conditions detailed in the July 2nd, 2019 staff report letter.
Supported by Commissioner Fransway. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And you have your temporary land use. Okay. We are at the portion of the agenda for a general discussion. Are there any points for discussion by the, anyone from the board? Any points of discussion from the audience? We have Director Best.
Yes, thank you. Planning Commission, I wanted to take this opportunity to bring something to your attention. I think it's important to talk about it. I know it's been talked about in other venues. But for the last four years, one of the best planners I've ever known and best people I've ever known has serviced this township. And he's here tonight on his last day, in his last minutes, doing his job, and doing it in the place where I think he does his best work, in the boardroom, working on the planning commission, working with you and for the people. His dedication and service has been beyond, I've never seen anybody as dedicated, who has worked as hard, and who actually cares about this community. I wanted to take the opportunity to say this in front of the planning commission tonight, because it's the last chance we get to officially say it. Yesterday, or a week ago, at the board meeting, I said, this is where the magic happens. Ron is one of the magicians that helped make that magic happen. And without him, the last four years, this township would not be where it is today. So, Ron Akers, I wanted to thank you personally, from me, from my staff, from everybody here who has, your life has touched, I want to thank you. So, thank you, Ron.
To the chair.
Thank you. Yes.
I guess, on behalf of the township, I'd also would like to comment and make those same comments. He has been very helpful to the township in the last four years, because we had stumbled, and he certainly pulled us up. And of course, I would, you know, like to thank Matt for the help that he has been. I think they have been a perfect match together, and now one half is leaving, and that is going to hurt and leave a hole. But hopefully, we will respond, and we will come. But to thank him for what he's done is, I hate goodbyes. So, I don't want to say goodbye, but you better come back around again, but you are certainly going to be missed, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Thank you for everything you've done. You got me. I was having a little trouble actually enjoying this for a little bit, having you come into the board four years ago. Got me motivated again, got me interested, and started training again. You've been a great friend, great help, great resource, and you are going to be missed. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Jar.
Thanks for bringing me up to speed, man. I'm very new to the commission. I think I'm highly junior member, and without Ron's help, I, yeah, I would have been lost. So, thank you very much for helping, again, make this an enjoyable experience. I really appreciate it, and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Director Akers?
Well, I just, you know, again, I.
My turn. Your professionalism, your integrity, your honesty, your friendship, none of these can be matched, and they will be the nexus of your success, no matter where you are with yourself as you go along in your walk. I hope for you the greatest of blessings and the greatest of success in all that you deserve with all the qualities that you have. Goodbye is not the end. Goodbye is not forever. It simply means that we'll miss you until we see you again. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you, everybody, for the kind words. I really appreciate it. You know, I have appreciated everybody's friendship on this board and throughout the township. We've had a lot of fun times, you know, talking with you guys after the meetings or at trainings, or, you know, on the phone about these projects that come before us. You know, and thank you, Matt, for your kind words. I really appreciate it, and I really have enjoyed working with you these past four years. You're awesome. You know, we, it's, you know, planning's a team sport, and, you know, a lot of nice things have been said to me and about me over the last, you know, month that I've had my notice in, and everything's been out. But, you know, I mean, the one thing that I want to say is that none of this work gets done without, you know, the outstanding consultants that we have, and the staff we have in the office, and the leadership team that we have at the township, and, you know, the planning commission, your guys' work. I've worked with a lot of planning commissions over the last 10 years I've been doing this, and you guys are one of the, one of the best I've ever worked with. Just your professionalism, your ability to handle the heat from the audience sometimes, the ability to be patient, be diligent, answer questions, respond to concerns, you know, ask questions. You know, I can't tell you how many times I've had conversations with all of you before the meeting, because you've had specific questions, or you've been concerned, or, you know, a resident approached you. It all shows that you guys really care about the community and are really, really involved. You know, sometimes the joke is with planners, is that, you know, we'll be working with some boards and commissions, and, you know, people come in, we spend 40 hours on these packets, and they'll come in the day of the meeting and open the packet for the first time and work through it. But that's something that I have never seen anybody do here at this township. Everybody's very prepared, very organized, and they care a heck of a lot about the community. So, from my side, I want to say thank you guys for, you know, providing a refreshing working environment where, you know, everybody has care and concern. It really makes my job a lot easier. So, thank you for the friendship, and thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll entertain a motion with Chair.
Moved.
Moved and supported. Adjourned the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.